Okay, what's first thing on the agenda? The agenda, or is it the minutes?
I see Sarah is here. I'm gonna share my screen here.
Okay. Let's have a look at the minutes. Everybody already have a chance to look at them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll move to her.
Okay. Julie moves to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Doug seconds, all in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. Agenda's pretty straightforward. Public hearing item, and then, uh, any other changes?
Uh, no, not done, I have-
Okay, uh, motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Kim moves to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Julie seconds, all in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, you're up there, uh, once you've had your presentation, then we'll open the public hearing.
Good.
Hi there! Are you en route to Nebraska?
Oh, I got my volume up.
Yes!
Okay. Pay attention to the road.
Okay, so the item that you have before you is a application for a subdivision plat and a zone change uh, from Blackbeet Development LLC with Joel Honeyman as the representative. Uh, the applicant is proposing a subdivision plat located along, uh, the western side of County Road seventeen on your map here, and north of Liberty Lane, uh, Eighth Avenue, so kinda south of the downtown area. Uh, they're proposing a twenty-seven lot, two block subdivision, uh, of approximately seven point six nine one acres to accommodate for residential development of single-family attached units, and also single-family detached units. Uh, the applicant is proposing to change the zoning from A agricultural to R three, uh, medium-density residential for lots, uh, one through six, block one here, and then eight through eleven over here, and then R four for lots twelve through nineteen, block one, then lots one through eight, block two, uh, with the intent of, uh, developing attached housing this, in this area, and then single-family in this area. Uh, and then lot seven, block one, uh, is proposed to be rezoned to PF, public facilities. Uh, this lot would be used for a drainage pond. Uh, also, the applicant has proposed to link drainage from, uh, this lot underneath the railroad tracks to existing city facilities on, uh, west of the development. And then, in your packet, I've attached those, uh, applications so that, um, you can, uh, if you're, for more information. Uh, one thing that I just kinda wanted to point out with our land dedication requirements and our zoning ordinance, when this was originally looked at, a couple of months ago, uh, when the Horace Park Board reviewed the application, uh, they reviewed this application, or this subdivision at seven point seven acres. Originally, this lot was, the city lot was a part of that plat. We've asked to have it removed, so it's been reduced down to seven point six acres. So, staff is recommending a cash and move land dedication amount of fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents, as stated in the staff report. Uh, staff didn't receive any comments from the public. Staff feels that this meets the intent and the objectives of the twenty forty-five comp plan, and we recommend approval, uh, of the applications as stated in the staff report. Also, I would like to point out that the representatives for that application are here tonight if you have any questions.
Okay, opening the public hearing. Is there anybody here from the public? Interested in this? Okay, closing the public hearing, you guys are still talking. Jim, I assume that, since we went over the drain plan several weeks ago, nothing's changed?
Nothing's changed, the application's been sent to the railroad. Indication is that there's no pickup there. They asked for some information as far as pipe material and that, and once plans are completed, then we'll submit that to them, so-
Okay.
There was no, that was the big hurdle at the time, was if the railroad was gonna allow a utility crossing or not.
Yeah, I think there's a, uh, clock ticking on the railroad. Okay, guys, questions?
I have a question. That large circle over in the corner, is that gonna be kind of a nightmare for someone to move, or is there a reason that that circle is there? Is it because of the corner, or traffic flow, or?
Correct, so that gives you access for those corner lots, otherwise it crowds in so much that you aren't able to get access.
They would, they would come down to a point.
Yeah.
It'd be a sweeping-
It's a, yeah, it's kind of a cul-de-sac, it's kind of a half cul-de-sac. If the intent is, is to meet both zoning codes and access requirements, that lot kinda needs to ball out a little bit. There are some minimum lot with requirements at the front of lots that we have to have at the setback, and that sort of accomplishes that. Public work has seen the plan, I believe, they're not, they're not, or thrilled with it, to be honest, but they're not objecting to it. Um, probably have been told.
The, uh, the R four portion on the, the attached, what's going in there? As far as, is it-
Like twin homestyles, ten-
Is it twin home or town home, like continuous?
No, it, the intent is, the intent is like, twi- traditional like twin homes, so like two units all attached, two units attached, that would split, so you wind up with, I think, three. There's six lots on the east side, if I'm counting correctly, um, so there'd be sort of like six twin homes on that side. And that would just be along the first eastern portion along County seventeen. The center is also zoned out for, but that's intended to be single-family, those are larger lots, those are eighty... Eighty, ninety-five hundred minimum square footage lots in the center, so very similar to the R three zoning around the edges.
Lucas, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
After this is all done and that southeast lot is sold, can the city de, can the city sell the, that, that city property?
So, I, I brought that up, uh, in reviewing this, uh, you know, what, who basically wants to take ownership of it? And it sounds like there's confusion there, I don't know if you followed up with anyone on whether it was the park that was taking care of it, the city that was taking care of it, but it's for a sign. Right now. That's, that's why it's there, so, um, my thought was that the city give it to the developer, make that one lot bigger, and then, uh, considers some sort of, um, a trade or something for, for other property.
Yeah, and city staff looked at this application, this parcel right here, and this parcel right here are both city-owned. Typically, most cities will not take on private development and maintain it. So, we did enter into talks with the property owner to see if he wanted to purchase the land, he said he wasn't interested, but I would believe there would be future opportunities down the road, uh, if this property were acquired by somebody else.
I think we can make them a real deal.
Yeah.
That, that, that's up to the city council, obviously, but-
No, and it's definitely been discussed, because it, it does in my-
I, I think we'd probably like to be rid of it.
I would think so.
Doesn't that kind of give us initial with the flag lot being?
No, actually, no, it's not a flag lot.
Yeah, and when we look at the definition of the flag lot, if it was flipped, it'd be a flag lot, but under our current definition, that would not be considered a flag lot.
Are we gonna be a little concerned about having backyards to the main street?
Off of the arterial, um, you know, you typically don't wanna have double-fronting lots, but there are situations where you can't avoid it, and that, that's what our ordinance spells out, that, uh, try to avoid it when necessary, but if not, um, you know, it doesn't not allow for it either, but it, it may be in the interest of those property owners to put up some sort of fence or screening.
Yeah, the, actually, what the plan was, is to put in a fence, uh, on the north and on the east side, by the developer.
That'd be good.
That is, so, yeah, continuity-
Hopefully, non-ma, uh, 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 non-maintenance, yes, of course.
So, that would increase the traffic in that one flow in and out by quite a bit. Cause you've got two, you've got two entries in and out of just that, and you're probably, what? Sixty, or seventy feet from the County seventeen?
The exact dimension.
That first, uh, per harvest circle.
I believe it's over a hundred and twenty, which is-
A hundred and fifty feet to the edge of the right-of-way.
Our zoning ordinance limits it to a hundred to a hundred and twenty, so they, they do meet that requirement, or actually, chapter two, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that right of, that first entry off our circle's a hundred and fifty feet from the right-of-way of County seventeen. Plus change.
It's your main arterial in and out, though, correct?
Already, yeah, that feeds the neighborhood to the east, further to the, I'm sorry, further to the west.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So, if the sign was given back to the developer, would he need to maintain that, or can he just get rid of the sign?
It would become private property at that point.
If there's an easement, the city would vacate the easement on it, and basically, those two lots would just be merged, is what I would do. You just have a bigger lot, so is it-
Would it just be that lot, or?
When somebody buys that lot, I think, I think we can make a deal, the city might wanna make a deal just to get rid of that, that piece of property.
Right.
Cause it's not useful for anything.
Correct. And it's not, at this point, it's not included in the-
No.
Yeah, so I don't know what kind of descriptions on that line.
Which plat is it for, the middle location?
Always, I'm pretty sure it was.
But, so again, just for now, for now, it's, it's not part of the, it's not part of the plat, so it, it's not an issue today. Okay? Because we cannot include it as part of the plat either, without the city being the signatory to it, correct?
Correct.
So, that's why it's outside of the plat.
Correct.
I think it's a mistake, I have a commercial on the, on the main street, we have a residential that's back to the main street.
So, when we bought this, about seven or two hundred and thirty people, uh, meeting, who did not want that commercial. Who specifically bought it, because it was going to be a commercial?
Yeah, we, we gotta look at it for the city, though, of the city, uh, you wanna have residential on your main street, you know, that's particularly not the case.
No, what she's saying, though, if, if you'll remember, uh, there were, uh-
There were fifty people in this room who did not want a commercial.
Yes. This, it was already presented once, as commercial, and the, uh-
Most of the residents of that neighborhood said, we do not want this commercial, we want a residential.
The neighbors rallied.
Yeah, oh, it's a mistake.
The tar wagons were outside.
It's, it's a mistake not to have commercial along the main, the main-
Yeah, but the rest of the thing wrong, main is, is not-
Well, I mean, they can make their decision, but I'm just saying, it's, it's really not good for the city to have it that way.
Cities are like standing on the north side, though, and that's already a residential area.
Other questions, comments? Okay, I'm looking for a motion concerning the plat and the rezon.
Is there any way to do that all R four, or does an R four look at it all? Or R three, you mean?
Uh, when we looked at it, the lot widths, when we were three, I believe there's a twenty-foot difference. And in addition, um, I, well, I don't know, I'd, I'd have to look at it, but I know a lot width was an issue.
What's the, what's the zoning on the north side, that's R six, isn't it?
I believe it's R two.
On the north side?
Oh, Northwood?
Yeah.
Those, those would probably be, whatever they are, they're more than likely non-conforming. To the north of it.
Yeah.
Willow Creek?
Yeah, yeah, they don't-
Yeah, whatever it's zoned, it's probably non-conforming to its, to its zoning, uh, just because it's from way back. Okay, to at least have a, have a, have a vote, I move to approve the, the zone, the rezon, and the plat. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Goes to city council?
Sure.
You, it, it is approved here. Okay, thank you. Okay. Remember, we were talking in the, uh-
Before we, before we move on, Russ, what was the opposition?
Uh, Kim, Kim wouldn't tell her.
Uh, you know, we have some residential along Main Street right now, and their backs are to the mains street. Some have fences, some don't, and they're just a kind of by-sore, and, you know, that's our commercial area. You know, and we're, now we're gonna create another one, I, I'm just, uh, not really comfortable with that.
Thank you for clarifying, I needed to know that, appreciate it.
Okay, uh... We're talking about, uh... Go ahead.
Okay, so, one of the first discussion, uh, items that we have is, uh, future land, or proposed future land use map change for sixty-fourth Avenue, we're just kind of, uh, looking at it, and we wanted to generate some discussion before moving on, forward on a policy. Uh, one of the things that we discussed was having some sort of newly-created future land use map, uh, land designation that would act as a buffer between compact and suburban development, so, uh, between low-density residential and a higher-density residential. Uh, so, what I kinda came up with, uh, this is all just in draft format, so I look forward to any comments that you have, but, uh, just as the language of that new future land use map designation, I'm calling it intermediate, and I'm trying to create more clarification in our policy that states that we would like to see this future land use map designation between suburban and compact, uh, that only allows for single-family detached, uh, residential units on medium-sized lots that would kind of fall in between, uh, those two uses. And in terms of density, um, you know, I just kept it at three unit, three to five units an acre. You know, that kind of falls under the R two, R three, uh, zoning district, uh, designations, that, that kind of acts as a buffer. And then, so then, the, the second part of that is, I was asked to kind of throw together, uh, proposed change for the sixty-fourth Avenue area. Uh, I, I have already gotten some preliminary comments prior to this meeting, and I'm looking forward to more. Uh, but basically, you have what's currently existing now, this is compact development, uh, higher-density, uh, residential development, this is all low-density residential in yellow, and then we have brown, which is urban, which is supposed to be more urban form, uh, multifamily, uh, like commercial neighborhood use, or neighborhood commercial uses, uh, just kind of more intense development. So, what I did down here is I took these low-density suburban development, and I implemented, uh, mixed-use, and then on the south side of sixty-fourth Avenue, I put it on the south side, uh, down here, and then I added the new intermediate feature land use map designation here, and I proposed converting this low-density suburban feature land use into compact, uh, just so that it would have more of, I, I guess my thought process behind it was, uh, it would have more of, um, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Kind of like a tran, a density transect, where you go from very dense and work your way all the way down to low-density development. So, that's kind of my thought process behind that, um, and I'm just kind of looking forward to your thoughts and, and wanna know what you think.
My initial thought, we were talking about this the other day, and I'm not particularly fond of changing that, uh, the rest of that, of that land, all to, uh, butterscotch.
And this was the three parcels down here?
I'm a little wary about taking that all to R six. The other thing I'm, I'm really, uh... wondering about is that brown section, which is the, uh, and describe what that is.
Uh, urban in our comprehensive plan, it basically states that's supposed to be higher res, density residential uses, and it cites examples like, uh, apartment, uh, uh, type structures, multifamily dwelling units, and then, uh, along with neighborhood commercials, so like light ind, or light commercial uses.
Light commercial?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Is that a bit original from the trailer park?
Uh, the trailer-
Trailer park is, that's south of there, isn't it?
Trailer park is this green area up here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then, these are all detached, single-family residential across the street, and then this is Lyons Park, right here.
Also, that's right across from Woodland Circle.
Yes.
But I believe this is Woodland Circle down here.
Yes, yeah.
This is Sunnyside right here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I kinda feel like the intermediate zone is too, too thin.
Do you have any, uh... How deep is that?
I don't know, yeah, I just put it as a blob on the map. Typically, with a feature land use map, I don't know why our city decided to go with parcel-based. That actually gives us less flexibility when making land use decisions, so, uh, I try to keep it purposely ambiguous, just that we have more discretion, basically, we can look at the context.
Just means that we think there needs to be a buffer there.
Correct, yep, so, we just wanna drive the idea home that our policy is that we wanna see something in between those two designations. Uh, can I also add a comment, too? Uh, you know, I had some thoughts, you know, typically, when I've talked to, uh, commercial developers, they talk about, you know, some of the things they look at, uh, prior to development, some of the, the driving, the decisions that, uh, uh... Basically, the metrics they look at that drive their decisions, and some of the feedback that I got was rooftops, uh, also, uh, transportation corridors, foot traffic, those are, you know, just some of the things they look at, but mainly, they, they look at rooftops. And what I thought was kind of interesting, when we asked a developer, you know, what do you think about us turning this into a commercial corridor? I, I thought they had a really interesting comment, they said, well, if you do that, you know, there's only so much commercial that your community can absorb, and it's based on rooftops, if you do that, that may take away from Seventy-sixth Avenue and Old Town. Uh, so, when I kind of thought about that, I was think, I think that was kind of my... What drove my decision to change this to more compact development, cause now you have more rooftops to, to support it, and then we're not taking away from the rest of the city. Uh, I'm afraid that if this stays low-density residential, that it's not gonna be able to support this, and they'll rely on Fargo, uh, to provide those rooftops, so, I... Yeah, I, I'm not set in stone on this, but I was just thinking, it may actually hurt rather than help our city if we kept this a low-density residential, or, uh, suburban residential designation. And then I was kind of looking at this use, too, I mean, this is such a high-intense use here with urban, you know, you got commercial zoned down here already. We know the landowner's a commercial developer, uh, I, I just, then we know that Fargo's planning on having a really high-dense, uh, corridor this way, I, I just thought it would tie in, and we could really take advantage of the whole corridor.
Other part of the discussion, uh, we were having the other day, that, that brown, that urban section. I was wondering about, about that being mixed-use, too, just from the standpoint of, uh... Well, we'll have to wait, see what we're gonna get worked out as far as the new land use ordinance, but under our current land use ordinance, you could put a bunch of apartments in there.
Urban, urban almost is a mixed-use, so it's in itself.
Right, I, I think that was kind of my thought process, too, you know, just, the, the future land use map designation of mixed-use doesn't mean it has to be mixed-use zoning, uh, it just basically states that the development outcomes that are expected for that area are either, uh, residential, commercial, side-by-side, or in one building. So, and you, you can arrive at that outcome with different various zoning, uh, zoning districts, you're not just limited to one. So, when I looked at urban, I kind of had the same thought, that you could still use, uh, you know, either commercial zoning or mixed-use. I, I, it would be a variety, but I think it'd be in our, uh, best interest to try to keep it one zoning type, uh, just so that it looks consistent.
See, that, I'd almost see that urban being larger than what you have. I mean, everything, everything on that side of Connor, Connor Road seventeen, you, it's just starting to develop, the one neighborhood's there, uh, that's going in now, but everything is just starting to develop over there.
Yep.
And that gives us the opportunity to do stuff like that, there, in those newer neighborhoods, instead of trying to put things into, behind existing neighborhoods, where you're gonna have that battle regardless, just like, you know, it was voted down here before that the community had fifty homeowners in here, and they didn't want anything but a residential development in there. You're gonna have the same thing-
Over there behind, uh, behind Sunnyside.
Yeah, you're gonna have the same thing there, you're gonna have every one of those residents coming in, so the opportunities that we have are more greater towards the east, and that's where your traffic flow's gonna come from anyways, from the east.
Yeah, you, either down Seventy-sixth or Sixty-fourth, correct?
But the bigger, that bigger mixed-use development, that's planned further south, correct? Where's, where's the one that was in-
Yeah, in, uh, Lakeview Edition, is that the one you're talking about? Yeah, it's further south, that's south of Seventy-sixth, um... If that were to go forward, I think that's like east of Casey's Gas Station, kind of in that area.
Yes.
Yeah, right, so a lot of that's already going there, so are we taking away from, you know, the future plan of that to put this up there? I mean, are, is more of that, should more of that go down there? And that does stay more residential, so you try and pull more businesses down towards where it's, where it's closer? Or do you try and separate that?
Yeah, what's kind of interesting is, you know, in terms of discussions on transportation, you know, it used to focus on County Road seventeen- you know, it used to focus on Connor Road seventeen, but now I think it's kind of flipped to sixty-fourth avenue and seventy-sixth avenue. That's going to be an east-west flow rather than north-south flow. So-
And a hundred.
Yeah, yeah, possibly a hundred. So I, there's been some speculation that maybe there should be a shift in adding commercial along this corridor too, as long as it's going to be a major thoroughfare. But, you know, that's just one of the balancing acts that you have to consider is that, you know, if you don't have all of the rooftops to support all of this commercial, you may be taken away from other areas. And do we want to do that?
The sixty-fourth, is that the one they're thinking of putting up, linked to the interstate first? Oh, they're already building it.
Overpass, yeah.
So I mean, you're giving it a large part.
They're building the overpass, but I think the interchange-
There's enough right of way there for an interchange.
No, the interchange is already, is already planned, I think for, it's either one-year or two-year out.
What about going across the red, is there any discussion on that?
On seventy-sixth, there's been talks about putting connection there.
That's been there for years.
Yeah. That to me, seventy-sixth would be, I would say, a little more concentration than sixty-fourth because of the reason of crossing the river. That's going to catch a lot of, a lot of flow once that happens. You're going to find more business flow than you will resident flow going through. I mean, residents may go up and through sixty-fourth to cut across to get to work, but majority of people are going to go on seventy-sixth, I would agree with you. Yeah, it, I mean, you know, we go take the downer road and we go down the lakes and stuff like that. And I mean, if that goes across, we'd probably be hitting that, you know? And there is some discussion that continue with that, well, seventy-sixth is the downer road really, isn't it?
I don't know where it ends up, but I just know the discussion is that seventy-sixth is supposed to have more of a fifty-second avenue feel. Where sixty-fourth is supposed to have a more fortieth avenue south feel. Where it goes under the, well, I think it's going over now, but it's just supposed to cross the interstate, nothing else. And seventy-sixth is actually supposed to cross over the river.
Well, I, I think one of the things you're going to find also is sixty-fourth and seventy-sixth, well, seventy-sixth is going to go on the forty-fifth here, this year, and up to fifty-second. Sixty-fourth is also going to cross over there and go veterans. Veterans is going to come down. I know the study isn't out yet, but the reason they're doing the study is because veterans is going to come south. Because they can do it now, instead of a bridge, you just have to have big culverts.
And I just wanted to point out too, the city of Fargo is planning Lake Fargo, recreational amenity right here.
They're digging it right now.
They're building it as we speak.
Yeah.
Are you digging it?
Yeah, I'm digging it. We have to have someplace to flush out the loose tape.
Yeah, it's kind of a catch twenty-two, sixty-fourth is going to get kind of the main traffic for a while until that seventy-sixth happens. And there's going to be some generation there no matter what we suggest.
Pull, pull down so we can look at, look at seventy-sixth also in this.
Okay, so here's sixty-fourth, they're in, this is seventy-sixth.
Okay, you see all that, that, that nice purple stuff on seventy-sixth? Okay, that's being held back by a landowner who doesn't like the street going through his living room until he's ready to give it up. All that development is based on having streets that service it from behind. And those streets servicing it from behind are dependent on Lakeview coming north. That's the one that goes through my living room. And nobody's going to pay me what it would take to move me out of there before I'm dead. So what I'm saying is, that's not going to develop as fast as people might think for the next few years.
Even on seventy-sixth, there's homes along, there's a lot of R-one homes along there right now, correct?
No, suburban residential. And residential estate.
Existing.
Existing on seventy-sixth.
Yeah, dark brown is SR and the light brown is RE. That's currently what this is zoned today. This is the current zoning of this sixty-fourth avenue today.
Leyland's is just right in there too, correct?
That's, yeah, that's right. And those folks just moved there, you know?
And I'd like to point out here, this is already C-two, this is on mixed use. So this would be the urban feature land use map area.
Now, I will also tell you that a developer already owns the northeast corner of seventy-sixth, under Route seventeen. The land, the land straight west of me, a developer owns it. Yeah, people are renting those houses. And he's made an offer on the, the land just right next to the pond right there on seventy-third avenue. So developer's trying to get, and he also owns the land north of my property there. So, fair amount of, but Leyland's isn't going anywhere anytime soon. Okay, back to the subject at hand then. By the way, what is the current status of Lakeview?
Sounds like there's talks of pulling out, but it's not definitive yet. Sounds like there's ongoing talks over issues of letter of credit and special assessment. What is it called? Delay.
So they were at the point of awarding bids?
No, just advertised.
Advertised, and that's been stopped?
Has not. We have not received a petition to stop the advertisement from the developer, from the petitioner yet. So we've gotten a, I've got an email and phone call from the developer's engineer requesting that we pull them. But the petition for improvements was filed by the developer and another entity. And we haven't heard anything from them directly yet.
So, Lakeview-
I will tell you that talks are in process on that. I was on the phone for several hours today on that topic. It's not stopped at this point.
Does that do just to rising construction costs or is it-
Has to do with letter of credit requirements and then a tax deferral on commercial multi-use property.
Okay, so nothing is officially stopped yet?
Correct.
Okay. So what other thoughts are on there, what, what we're looking at there along sixty-fourth? Is it a, yes, we should be keep thinking about that, or no, we shouldn't?
Oh, I, I don't mind the idea of putting mixed use in there. But you could put mixed use in all the way along that corridor.
Yes.
You know, run it all the way out to Connor Road seventeen. Because there's already going to be residential across the street. And you could actually back high-density right next to the, right next to that if you had to.
Yeah.
But you should have a smaller block going, I don't know how big that area is, but even that Deer Creek Parkway, did they vote on that?
No, that hasn't, that hasn't-
Gone anywhere yet?
That hasn't finished up yet. There's some kind of negotiations going on there.
So that may end up being like an R-three?
I doubt it, I would doubt it.
And then your new, your new color, your new color notation, is that on your map?
Yes.
Where is it on the key?
I don't have it in the key.
Oh.
And that was called what now? What did you call that?
I just threw out the name intermediate.
Intermediate, so that would be like R-one to R-three?
Yeah.
R-two and R-three?
Yeah.
And so you maybe even grow that a little bit larger on the, as a buffer? Because you'll, basically you're only going to get one roll out, it's probably in there.
Now, one of the other things is that yellow blob over there, Vistos, I, my guess is the intermediate should bend around the south end of it. Because-
You're talking about right here?
Yeah, coming down further, come, come straight down south a little more. No, the last lot there in Vistos, I would say bend the intermediate around it.
Oh, okay. So this chunk right here?
Possibly. Although they would have, they would not like, that street would probably not support a whole bunch. The street would have to, supporting those houses would have to go back to sixty-sixth or something. Because otherwise, those few people would be in here with torches and pitchforks about having R-six coming down their street. And I wouldn't blame them.
Yeah, and the same thing with Community Focus along Connor Road seventeen on the west side. I've already talked to half a dozen neighbors out there and just let them know what their future planning. You'll have every one of those residents that backed that neighborhood in here. They do not want to see anything under an R-three going in there.
Well, Community Focus, I think it's more of a commercial.
But it's a high-density commercial, so it can be, the way it's labeled on that chart is an R-six, like an R-five, R-six, and then a high-density commercial. So that's basically is going to be pushed to get in there. And if that's what it's zoned, or future zoned as, that's what we're, that's what you're stuck to. And that's basically what's going to end up getting approved in there. Because there's, once it's set, there's no way for us to come back and say, you know, we're not going to allow that. Because it meets all, if it meets zoning requirements, it's hard for you to say, period. We can't put it in there because people don't want it. Well, our opportunity is now, and if people don't want it, we should be looking at changing some of those areas.
And what would you change that to?
I would change that to the intermediate.
Well, I think the city vision for that area is commercial. So I don't know how successful an R-six, single-family residential proposal would do coming through.
Yeah, at one time I thought there was talk that he was going to donate some of that park land, but I don't hope that ever went anywhere. Because there really isn't any park area besides the one big park that's going in on the development just west of town. The city park is large enough anymore to support.
There's a big park going in up on sixty-sixth street. You want to kind of point where, where it's going?
Yeah, up here. And then there's a small pocket park over here, Lyons, and then-
Yeah, but point where, that's what, five or six acres or something?
Yeah, it's pretty large.
Yeah, yes, but that's, that's already been, been planted.
It'd be a regional park.
Yes. So you're suggesting an intermediate there on the west side of Connor Road seventeen, or the seventy-sixth?
I mean, it's very similar to what's all the way down along that whole stretch, pretty much.
Yeah, I think that's a separate conversation from sixty-fourth avenue. I don't know if there's support for that or not. But, you know, it's, not to say that we can't revisit that in the future, but I would separate that from sixty-fourth avenue.
Yeah, I actually think we need to take this in bits.
Because most, almost all the land, except for a few parcels, are already sold to developers on the east side.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yes, they are, right? And I know that one's not, the one on the west. Is it, is that owned by the one, by one guy?
Yeah, counts, counts as one.
Tell, tell the whole house. Somebody's going to make an offer you can't refuse.
But if you get back up to sixty-fourth, either the mixed use, that mixed use would, or that urban would grow, or you take that mixed use and run that mixed use all the way through that band?
I think so. Bring it all the way up to Connor Road seventeen.
I do like the idea of having businesses along that street. So that when that traffic flow is coming into Connor Road seventeen, it's all there. Because right now, your businesses are all stuck right on the west side up along Come and Go because it's all residential. And those arterios going east-west are going to be the best opportunity to put business in because that's where the traffic's all going to come from. Pretty much everything that's on the west side is all residential right now anyway.
Now, I have a dumb question for you. Why on the north side of sixty-fourth did you stop, stop the pink where you did?
I just kind of threw it out there. I don't know what the thoughts are on those two parcels here to the west. You know, I, I was told that basically suburban was just kind of a filler until future decisions were made on future land use maps. I kind of figured this one was already decided upon. But I mean, if that's still in question, we could certainly take a look at that too and change that. And, you know, we don't have to color the whole parcel. I mean, if you wanted to continue mixed use on half of it, you know, that, we could certainly do that too.
I'd go with that, yeah.
Okay.
I actually like that all the way along that corridor.
Yes.
So you're looking at wrapping this all the way down and then along the north side here?
You could leave that, you could leave that the south side here.
Leave the south side, right?
South side goes straight across, yeah, and the north side goes straight across too.
Okay, and then urban would stop right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because you really want to get businesses in, the opportunity is in those newer areas where you can actually plan to put the businesses in. And once the businesses are already there, then you can develop that areas around there more into residential instead of trying to put them in next to R-ones right away. Now, those are, those are the corners that are going to want to be there.
Yeah. Yes. So basically, you're going to make all of sixty-fourth pink?
Okay.
Plus the sewer is already in along that whole stretch, correct?
I don't think it is.
No.
It didn't go all the way from Forest all the way up to fifty-
It's a forest name. It's pressure pipe. So it's something that would need a lift station to push into. You just can't directly tap it. But yes, it goes from Wall Avenue all up to Deer Creek Parkway.
Yeah. At, at that point, I mean, how close are we to hitting capacity? At, at that point, I mean, how close are we to hitting capacity on that?
Not very, the monthly flow is.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying today, I'm saying with the lots we have sold, the lots we have planted.
So a year and a half ago when I looked at that, we had about four years, so we're down to three and a half, two and a half, three years. Yeah, cause right, right now, none of that services the west side at all.
Yes, this is all the Lost River.
Lost River.
It's west of, west of the Cheyenne.
Where's Lost River at?
Bottom left of the city.
Uh, Wall Avenue, uh, west on Wall Avenue, once you cross the, the river.
So right now, Lost River, Prairie View, Terragardens, around Cub Creek, and around the high school and middle school goes to Fargo.
And that's all building out.
That is building out, yes.
Yeah, I, I took a, I took a stroll through Lost River five last week, it was wholly mackerel.
Yeah.
So have we covered this part or not?
Well, if, I just wanted to recap, just to make sure I got it right, and then, you know, if you want me to move forward with it, I'll, I'll update it, so. Basically what I've heard is you want mixed use all the way on the north side, all the way on the south side, whoops. Keep this urban, uh, change this to intermediate and then make this intermediate, uh, buffer thicker.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, not necessarily bigger, I don't, I don't care how, how big it is, just that we show that that, something has to be there.
And then I, I believe you said add it up here too, correct? Between, uh, mixed use?
Yes.
And, okay.
Are you guys okay with that? Yeah, I mean. Oh yeah, I mean, you wanna start at the intersections that are gonna wanna be, they're gonna start there first. Exactly, typically, you know.
Okay.
I mean, nobody's gonna wanna put a marketing campaign up there.
No.
Now, do you want me to bring this forward as formal action, uh, publicize it and then, uh, vote on it? Or do you want further discussion?
I would just assume bring it, let, let's, let's, let's throw it out there and see what sticks.
Okay.
Yeah, cause then at least to get some discussion.
Yes, yes. Cause I think we can, we can sit here and talk about for the next six months.
Yeah.
I think we need to, to move.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, am I, am I speaking just for myself or?
Yeah.
Okay? Okay.
Okay.
And the areas south of that? Because those are gonna start right away too.
You're saying you wanna make additional future land use map changes?
No, not right now, but that's probably our next area to, to start looking at, correct?
Which area are you talking about?
South of what he's got on the visual map right now.
Yep, that one.
Or that's all done already. You got school, school, and then you got all that egg in behind there.
Well.
So that's all, see, everything's, everything right now is still in. In that high density. And/or, uh, Community Focus. Which, Community Focus is pretty generalized, I mean, that's, that's more defined, cause then you really, you're, you're limited to either. The high-density like C five, six, and then you're the, the high-density commercial.
I just think of putting McDonald's out of my block.
Yeah, cause see, Community Focus is, is, um, when you get to, I know, I know you've got the description there, but when you go to your chart. Which shows what can be in those.
Yeah.
That's a lot more specific about what can be in, you know, about what they're looking in those areas, cause there you got R five, R six. C two, C three, um, to me, that's what I was looking at, cause it gives you a better idea, even in the urban. Here you are, you go from an R three all the way to an R six, so you got kind of a blend of everything.
See, I think Community Focus, I think R five and R six almost oughta be pulled out of there. I, I.
Yeah, mixed use is definitely an R five, R six, I mean, that's what really mixed use would be. And a C two and three, I mean, those are.
Well, the other thing is.
The compact.
On that, on that zoning districts, do we even have mixed use on there anymore, for yet?
We never did, so, the future land use map was adopted in the year two thousand nineteen prior to my arrival, and. During the year of two thousand nineteen, the comp plan was still under discussion, this was. A do, I was told this was adopted kind of as a guide to divi- uh, guide development for that time being, until the comp plan was adopted. Then the comp plan was adopted last year in May, and I believe we adopted the, uh, approved the mixed use zoning district in either June or July. If I remember correctly, that came after the comprehensive plan, so, uh.
Do the words in our mixed use in the ordinance match up with? What's on here, with, what's on there?
Yeah, I, I think it's pretty close, or. It, it wouldn't be out of, uh, context with what's stated.
Right, and then your compact development, of course, for that's gonna be changed and that'll change to. Basically, R one, two and three is gonna be your intermediate, correct?
Right, yep.
Um, would be in, in that one. And then you, and then your compact would basically be anything from R four to the R six.
Okay. Let's move forward.
Okay, that's the start there. Okay, our next discussion item was based on the zoning ordinance amendment to the accessory structure, uh, size for large lots. In your staff report, I kinda gave you the draft of basically, you know, what I was doing is I was pulling out of each zoning district designation. The description on the maximum, uh, size of accessory structures, and I put it into a table for simplicity service, uh, uh, purposes, and. The way I broke it down is basically, here's a table based on the zoning district, this is what you're allowed. And then following that, it says, well, here's an exception, if you have a lot size that's in excess of. Or falls between these ranges of, uh, large lot sizes, so. As directed, I started at point seven-five acres, and I just kinda threw these out here just to kinda mirror Fargo. Uh, you know, I start out at point seven-five acres to one acre, uh, would be allotted a, a max accessory. Uh, structure size of thirty-five hundred feet, and one to two, four thousand, so it would just go up in increments of five hundred. Uh, for every increment of one acre, and that kinda stops at five to ten. Um, I, I think in my opinion, just kinda looking back at this in retrospect, and then some, with some early conversations with, uh. Chairman Sar and Councilmember Viet, you know, this may be a little bit too large. Uh, I think I had a really good, uh, suggestion to kinda start that out at, uh, I believe I had two thousand instead.
We were, we were looking at in that point seven-five to one acre, we were wondering about the, the two thousand square foot. And then the one to two acres, maybe dropping that back to thirty-five hundred, uh. The rest of them are probably okay, but on a, on a three-quarter acre or a one acre lot at thirty-five hundred feet is huge. It's huge, and just out of, uh.
It'll look out of place.
It'll look out of place, yes. A, a two thousand square foot building, you know, uh.
Is still big.
Is that forty by fifty?
Yeah, yeah, that's still pretty big, but that's about, that's about as big as you'd wanna get.
Yes. Uh, what we're wondering about is like, dropping that three-quarter to one acre down to one, two thousand feet. And the next category down to about thirty-five hundred, and the rest of them, okay. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, they're smaller, it's a pretty good size.
I have a question about the chart. So on number ten, it says accessory structure buildings shall be limited to the following maximum footprint.
Yes.
So if you're an RE, your building, your accessory structure can't be more than eight hundred or ninety square feet?
Read number eleven.
Yeah, but you've already.
No, no, read number eleven.
Maximum accessory structure building footprint, maximum exceptions based on.
Exceptions.
Okay.
Okay, you are, you are correct, but here's the exceptions to that rule.
Okay, I just didn't understand that.
Okay. And, and the lawyer would make the words. Uh, these are not lawyer words yet.
It's kinda confusing.
The lawyer would make the words make sense, yes?
No pressure, huh?
No, no pressure. Yeah, these are, these are.
Cause I read it kinda like you could have a, you could only have eight hundred and forty square foot building, but your lot could cover, you know, like I have five acres, so you could cover fifty-five hundred, so I could have. Five eight hundred and forty square foot buildings.
No, no.
Yeah, and, and like I said earlier, this is just rough draft format, but my, my thinking process behind this is. The top table, we have it all on one table, so we pull it out of each individual zoning district, it's all in one area, so you're not flipping pages. And then below that, I say, by the way, if you have lot sizes in, in excess of these amounts. You have an exception, you actually have larger footprints, uh, that, that you're allowed to have for accessories, uh, structure buildings, so.
See, on my land, I could actually build fifty, fifty, ten by twelve accessory buildings without even getting a permit.
Yeah.
Because there's no permits for, you don't require a permit for a hundred, for a hundred and twenty square feet or less.
Correct, yeah.
So what do you think of the, uh, again, of the two thousand at, at the three-quarter to one and, uh. Thirty-five hundred at the one to two?
Joe? I would say that they shouldn't exceed the house size along with that, for smaller lots.
Should not exceed the house size, if the house is two thousand, they shouldn't exceed two thousand.
Well, we kinda had a discussion about that, here's kind of our thoughts, so typically, you know, when architects and planners talk to each other when they're crafting code. They think about the context of the neighborhood a- and the feel, and. So typically with your conventional residential neighborhood, you want the accessory building not to dominate the landscape, you want it to look. Accessory in use, you want it to be smaller than the principal building, you wanna keep it at human scale, so you control for height setbacks. Size of the building, but once you get to these larger lot sizes of acre, two acres, you know, the, the primary structure really doesn't dominate the landscape anymore. And it, yeah, I tend to think of like agricultural, uh, homestead sites, you know, you have all these accessory buildings. And it seems like in most communities, most communities are okay with that, that kind of sets the look and feel of that area, so our thought process was, well. You know, if we're going to enforce these smaller square footages on these large lot sizes. It's gonna look bizarre because you're gonna have this principal structure, this tiny accessory building, and then this gigantic tract of land. And a lot of landowners get frustrated because they can't really utilize the land to its optimal performance, so. We're thinking, kind of in line with some of our neighboring communities, that, okay, well, for these typical residential subdivisions where you have smaller lots. You really wanna control that accessory structure so that it doesn't dominate the landscape, like accessory in use, human scale. But once you get to these areas of town where you have, uh, rural subdivisions where you have, you know, these lots in excess of an acre or more. It really doesn't make sense to limit those accessory structures to those small footprints anymore, and you, you should really start. Kinda looking at those as kinda like homestats where you.
I disagree with that.
The reason I would have a problem with limiting to the size of the, uh, the footprint of the house. Is because if you've got, if you've got, uh, one neighbor here on this one acre lot that has a, uh, two-story. House that's, uh, uh, twelve hundred square feet on each level or fourteen hundred feet on each level.
So you're talking about gross square footage?
I'm, I'm talking about the footprint, and the, and the next, and the next house over is a rambler, and he's got twenty-two hundred feet. Uh, why does this guy get a bigger accessory building than this guy? In the same, same neighborhood? I don't want to be the one that see console, uh, field development.
Is it possible to do what you're trying to do? With this table without having two tables, so instead of the first table with the. Based on zoning district, is there a way that you can just do all this based on lot size? Cause if you look at your top table, almost everything is limited to eight hundred and forty square feet.
You could possibly.
The only issue is gonna be R six. So I think that's.
None of those lots will be more than three-quarters of an acre than on R six?
What's that?
None of the lots in R six will be three-quarters of an acre or larger?
No, but what I'm wondering then is, is, you know, if you did everything less than point seven-five or two-quarters of acres. Cap to eight forty issue then, is only be with R six, you don't necessarily want an, an R six lot to be able to go up to eight hundred and forty square feet, but.
And I, I, I see what you're saying, and I had, initially had that thought process, but then I looked at industrial and commercial zoning districts. And that, there's no limit, so I was kinda thinking, well, how would you get around that?
Well, then, then we do your exceptions.
Oh, yeah.
And say that industrial, commercial are.
One of the, we, we've run into this before, we have a number of R one lots in town that are over an acre. How do we?
And that's why it seems like everyone's trying to tie this to, to the lot size, so why not just do that? Just tie it to lot size and give it.
Well, another thing I'd point out is R five, R five is, even though it's not very feasible, it's suppo- it's supposed to be designed around a suburban. Multi-family concept, and what we see typically here in this city is you have the garage around the perimeter of the property. Uh, if you look at the R five section, it exempts that from any maximum building footprint size to allow for that type of development to occur. So I was thinking if we did it by lot size and we had a suburban, a multi-family unit development proposal, then they wouldn't be able to build that wraparound garage.
And that's where I think, like that, the industrial, commercial goals would be your exemptions. Cause then you're down to just one table and you're limiting confusion.
Okay, for instance, uh, R one, what would we say?
I wouldn't have R, I wouldn't have any zoning district in your table, it would all be based on spot size. And then just have your exemptions like bare disreptions.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
The reasoning for.
Can.
For the R five, the reasoning for industrial, commercial, and you can do that in one paragraph, so these are exempt from. The above table.
Yeah.
Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause every issue that we've ever ran into is exactly what you're saying, Russ, where the, the zoning district just didn't make sense for the lot and the. Homework was capped at what they can do with an accessory structure based on the zone rather than what actually makes sense.
I wasn't following what you're saying, but, but I, now that I do, I, I, I agree, I'd like to see, uh, see the chart built that way. That's something that would make sense, now, the question we have then is. What do we want with a, uh, what do we wanna allow on a, uh. Nine thousand square foot lot? Right now, in that zoning, in that zone category, we'd, we'd, we'd put down eight hundred and forty feet. I would suggest probably carrying that eight hundred and forty feet through those sizes.
Would we get rid of, uh, five hundred for R six and just do eight forty across the board? So lot sizes zero to point seven five are eight forty?
Yeah.
Uh, of course, you have some really small lots with.
Big sheds.
Big sheds.
And some of those R six lots are, I think, forty feet wide.
Yeah, forty, eighty.
Yeah, that's why, that's why they need a.
Their whole backyard's gonna be a garage.
That's why they need that.
Slap yourself.
Well, they have a certain amount of coverage too, that they can't see.
Yeah, everybody said it.
So that's.
Cover back that anyhow. You're on to that issue.
So it should be no problem. Okay, let's see what you come up with.
Okay, do you want this as a formal text amendment? Or do you want further discussion?
No.
Okay.
Let's do it as, let's do it as, as the text amendment, and, uh, if we have to, we'll, we'll table it, but we'll also, uh, put it out to the public.
Okay.
What we're doing.
Yeah, we're gonna take that down to what, two thousand, and then thirty-five hundred, and go from there.
Correct, so what I have right now is, um, zero to point seven five, eight forty. Point seven five to one acre, two thousand, one to two acres, thirty-five hundred. And then I would just follow four, forty-five hundred, five thousand.
And then the exceptions for, uh.
Right, that followed by a paragraph with, uh, the exception that the R five, all the commercial, all the industrial, and I believe mixed use, uh, zoning districts are, do not have a maximum accessory structure size.
Cause there, really, on a one acre lot, thirty-five hundred is large, but you're not finding many, just, uh, one point one acre, one point zero one acre, you're not finding many lots that are in that range. They're usually one and a half acres to three, so.
Actually, we have a bunch of one point zero, we have one point one acres, uh, arrow wood, I think.
Really?
Came out that way. Uh, we, we explained to one guy that, you have to go tell your, he wanted to know if he could, cause it was R one, he wanted to know if he could put it bigger than eight hundred and forty. And we explained to him, you have to go tell your wife, because your lot size, you're required to build an eighteen hundred square foot building. It was three percent at the time.
The orchard has a big lot, too?
Yeah, the orchard.
Right, yeah, you get big lots.
Anybody who's, who's septic, got a septic is probably got a big lot.
But they're limited where you can build a garage too, or an outdoor.
Totally, totally, because.
So on that limits your square footage, and what they'll come in and ask for permission to build anyways, so. He said point seven five is at like two thousand to thirty-five hundred, which.
Yes.
Even two thousand is pretty big, you know, my lot is about eighty-five point five, and I could see one that big on that property. Um, but you get the coverage too, so.
Yes.
If you have a septic, where should I build on that anyway?
No, hopefully.
Yeah. See, if you want to plant a few trees on.
Barrett, the, uh, the only question I have is in regards to the R six. I question if, uh, eight hundred and forty square feet isn't just a little bit too big for those teeny little lots? Um, we had talked about the possibility of leaving that at a five hundred foot max. I don't know what everyone's thought is on that, but I wanted to bring that up. So far, I'm liking the discussion I'm hearing, and I, I like the simplification of the table. So I would just ask what your thoughts are on that, uh, R six, cause again, we don't, we don't need any eye stores or neighbors getting angry, because they can't see, you know, in, into the backyard or whatever, because a building's too big, I, I wanna open that for discussion.
But the R six, won't the R six be limited based on square footage and coverage anyway?
So that's, Councilmember White, that's what we discussed, is that you can only build your buildings so big, because you, you can only cover so much of the lot with buildings. So they would be limited by lot coverage, rather than by the actual accessory building's structure size.
Right, throw it there.
I'll also point out that there are, uh, parts of, uh, Lost River are zoned R six. They're not built on R six lots. He zoned them on R six, because he wanted the side yard setbacks of the R six.
Yeah, I throw out there too, maybe we do zero to a third of an acre, five hundred feet, um.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, is, and not necessarily a third, because of the third, you're still talking about twelve thousand square foot. It's close enough on the math, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, or fourteen thousand square foot.
Right.
So, uh, and I, I would do it in square feet and not, and not in, uh.
Fractions, yeah.
In fractions down there. Uh, you might, you might eliminate that, you know, you might, you might do the start at, uh, five or six thousand square feet. Uh, below five or six thousand square feet, you're five hundred feet.
Yeah, you're, you're looking at under fifteen thousand square feet, so maybe zero to fifteen thousand square feet, uh, limited to five hundred square feet of the accessory building structure, or no?
Because right now, we didn't have eight forty.
Oh, yeah.
Cause fifteen thousand square, I, I wouldn't say fifteen thousand square feet, I'd say more like, if you wanna, uh, limit it, uh, it's at six thousand or below.
Hmm.
So Councilmember White, does that make sense, what we're saying with that?
Yes, it does, I was going through an area where you and I were cutting out when you were discussing that, so thank you for the clarification.
You bet.
She also referenced the, uh, uh, the area of the cut lot coverage as part of that, you know, so they.
Yeah.
Look at that also, just to remember.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's, the review is multifaceted, so we'll be looking at lot coverage, uh, building height setback. And if you recall, when we, uh, amended this ordinance, we also stated that for, I believe is, every foot over fifteen feet has an additional foot of setback, so that we get that light and narrow aspect addressed. Um, so I, you know, just because we allow for a maximum building size, doesn't mean that that's what's gonna be allowed to be built, without taking the other requirements into consideration. So I, I mean, it, it, we could be really blunt about it and just say, you know, zero to three quarters of an acre, eight hundred and forty, and then we'd let those other, uh, requirements determine what, what the size of that building's gonna be, but, uh, but if we wanted to fine tune it, we, we certainly could, and we could start looking at smaller, uh, square footage, uh, lots too.
I, I think that it makes sense either way, um. I just wanna have a little bit of common sense behind it, and, you know, like you say.
You keep using that word.
Sorry, sorry, but if, you know, if the other criteria are what dictates the size of the building not to exceed a certain size, that's fair, I just wanna make sure that it's consistent and clear, and I think we're getting there, I'm liking what I'm hearing.
I, I would actually advocate for adding in five hundred square feet, just so that you don't give anybody the false hope that they can build a eight hundred and forty foot, uh, square foot accessory building on their site, when it can't support it. I, I think that would actually add more clarity, it.
What do you mean, go like from five hundred to eight hundred and forty, based on lot coverage?
Yeah, I'm just imagining a resident looking at the table, and they say, oh, look, I, I can build an eight hundred and forty square foot building. They go and order it, they, you know, uh, submit their building permit application, we do the evaluation, and then tell them, well, based on lot coverage, you can't. So I was just thinking, in terms of, uh, you know, clarity, reducing conflicts between staff and residents in the future, probably couldn't hurt just to add in that, that smaller, uh, five hundred square foot limit, uh, based on the lot size, so that somebody actually has a, can financially plan for their, their accessory building that they're trying to, to.
I think if we use, we list those elements within that definition, that, uh, we can, they'll at least see that, and see that there's more restrictions.
Hmm. So.
Take your best shot.
Okay, and you're comfortable with six thousand, or is that kinda opened, uh, you know, my review to see?
That's open to your review.
Oh, okay.
I, I'm just using an example, and because six thousand is bigger than a four thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, and I, I would have to look at minimum lot size requirements of the zoning, you can order it up, see what that number would be.
Yeah, you, you are required to bring it up to that level.
To two thousand.
Tell your wife that.
Eight hundred and forty definitely wasn't big enough.
Are we done?
So, yeah, unless you have further comments or questions.
That's yours? That's your.
Okay, I'm gonna go. All right, say aye.
Aye.
Before, before we finish, what's the next area that we're gonna look at, at, at the comprehensive plan for the future land use map? Are we going to the south of sixty-fourth next?
Yeah, that's open to, uh, whatever your preferences, there may be development along the diversion channel in the future, that we might wanna look at that, uh, and start talking about what ti- what kinda development we wanna see along that diversion channel.
I don't think we wanna stop, I think we wanna take, keep taking bites, before some of these areas come back and bite us.
Yeah, I agree. I got a question, how far did they move the diversion south of hundreds, you know, they moved that?
Wasn't too far, um.
Just south of my house?
I think it's on my zoning map here.
It was a quarter mile south of Ford, right, did they move that, move that?
I thought it was the southwestern tail that got moved.
Oh, the, oh, the southwestern tail?
Yeah.
Not, not the main dam?
Right.
Okay.
Does it southern bank that on this guy?
I don't care where you're going next, but every meeting I wanna do a reversal, so that we're constantly updating this, if that's reasonable.
I would actually slow it down, cause it's policy, and I, I think.
You're gonna inundate, you're gonna inundate, among other things, city council.
Yeah, that too.
Yeah, how about Moncule?
I, I, I think what would be smarter is if we created a priority list, and then started to work through that priority list, uh, just so that we're not bouncing around blindly, uh.
We have some time on the diversion land.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fair, I just, I wanna make sure that the process continues, and as far as inundating council, we're, we're already past that point, so why stop? Let's just keep going, you know? But I, I like the action that's been taken so far, and I agree with that. Uh, if you look at order of priority, or maybe order of development, something like that, I'll leave that up to planning and zoning. I just, I, I wanna see some, some real positive things come out of this, and I, I think that it's a really good start.
So you're saying that, that southwest tails, what, what the?
Yeah, I think originally this was supposed to go straight down, and now it's been moved southwest.
No, no, it's been going south, it's been going southwest the whole time.
Okay.
It never.
I think there's like a two thousand and fifteen map in our office, where it showed.
Oh, yeah, well, two thousand and fifteen, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Because we didn't, we didn't have.
Plan B.
Plan B in two thousand and fifteen either.
Yeah, right.
We, we didn't have, we didn't have our city eaten up by, uh, by Monster.
I mean, why did they loop that thing so far north and then back down again?
There it is.
So, so they wouldn't, so they weren't taking up so much, uh, land in Minnesota.
And, and Michigan County. It's moved the staging area north into more of Cass County. So it's just, it's more of a reservoir that can hold more.
Yeah, and, and they're not flipped up.
I could never understand why they had to ride up against hundreds, and now they changed that, so that makes sense.
No, it's never right up against a hundred.
It was pretty much what I saw.
It's a quarter mile.
What you saw was probably the setback, of what you, what's considered to be where you can do any work.
Yes.
Within the quarter mile of High Hazard Dam.
Well, it's weird, we get the permit, and it highly discourages it, but it doesn't prohibit it.
Right, they want, they locally, they just need to make.
Right. And I, I would say that may be our next discussion with the future land use map, you know, what do we wanna see in those areas? Unless we have some other high priority areas we wanna discuss.
Water culture.
Yeah. So, okay. Thanks, Sarah, are you still there?
So how do we stop?
I am, I was looking for, uh, the next motion, ha ha.
Yeah. Oh, yep, yep, but.